All right. I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 20th. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Connor Henderson. Please be seated. And City Manager, when you're ready, the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Protim Cassidy.
Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. And do we have any announcements or written communications?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. And presentations.
We have a couple commissioners, Commissioner Brian Stecher and Mary Kenny of the Los Angeles County Citizens Redistricting Commission, and they're going to provide a presentation on the potential redistricting in Los Angeles County, and they are on the screen.
And welcome and thank you for participating.
Well, you're welcome and thank you for inviting us. One of our most important responsibilities is to get input from as wide a cross-section of people in the county of Los Angeles as possible, and so we appreciate your welcoming us to your meeting and hope you'll share some of our materials more broadly. There, we sent a set of slides, and I don't see them on my screen, but I was hoping that someone would, there we come. We will be cognizant of your time tonight and try to compress this presentation down into 15 minutes. What we want to do for you is to tell you why redistricting is important, what the role of the commission is, something about the rules that govern it, redistricting, and that we're trying hard to follow, and how you can be involved. So, next slide, please. As I said, we're hoping to get input from citizens throughout LA County, but not tonight. The purpose of this conversation is to tell you about what we're doing, but we're holding hearings throughout the county. In fact, there'll be one at 7:00 this evening, and we will show you a map later of where the rest of the hearings are, where people can formally give the commission input in a public forum that complies with all of the rules of the Brown Act. Tonight, we're not planning on asking you to tell us about your communities of interest or anything like that. Next slide, please. We're going to try to cover four things. Briefly, what's new about redistricting in 2021. Tell you a bit that you probably know about the complexity of Los Angeles County. Go over the procedures that need to be followed for the redrawing of the supervisory districts so they comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and go over what you can do to help us get out the word. Next slide. In 2010 and previously, the redistricting process was controlled by the County Board of Supervisors, although they had a committee that helped them. Ultimately, the supervisors were the final ones to draw the lines. As a result of a citizens initiative in California and state legislation, in 2020, I think I said 2020, I meant 2010 for the old approach. The new approach takes place in 2020, and there's an independent commission that is free of the influence of the board that is redrawing the five supervisory districts so that they are equal size and give everyone an equal opportunity to have their voice represented in among the commissioners who govern them. Next slide, please. Thank you. The commission adopted a set of values because we want to be public and upfront about what we're trying to accomplish, and you can go to our website and find out more about these. But essentially, we think it's really critical that we are accountable to the citizens, that we're transparent in our process, that we use objective criteria and demonstrate the highest level of integrity while trying to be inclusive and be respectful of all of the people who are living in this large and diverse county. Next slide, please. So let me tell you a bit about why redistricting is important. Slide. Every 10 years, we're required to redraw legislative boundaries because populations shift. People move, people come into the area, certain groups grow in size, other groups shrink, and the underlying principle of democracy is that everyone has an equal opportunity to vote and express their desires in terms of their elected representatives. So, redistricting is the way that we ensure that in 2020, the five districts are really drawn in a way that everybody has a fair and equal chance to vote for a candidate of their choice. Next slide, please. And in LA County, the county itself is a powerful organization. It controls a huge amount of resources, and each of the five supervisors has a lot of resources that they can direct themselves and a fair amount of power and say over how they are directed. And they provide services throughout the county related to public health, to taxing, to social services and mental health supports, to law enforcement and sheriff's offices, and many areas, and I don't know, I apologize whether Avalon is one of them or not, many incorporated cities actually get services directly from the county rather than providing them themselves. But the county has a huge role to play in bringing governance directly into the lives of the people in Southern California, in LA County in particular. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the county, and it's enormous. We have 25% of California's population is in LA County, and it is larger than 41 of the individual U.S. states. There are over 88 cities, more than 100 unincorporated areas, and it's one of the most ethnically diverse counties in the United States. Next slide, please. So this is our current map. Each of those districts, when they were drawn, held roughly 2 million people, and our goal this year is to again draw the boundaries for five districts that are equal or almost equal in size. That is the primary criterion that we need to meet. But there are a number of others, and so let's talk a little bit about the process itself. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Mary Kenny, who's going to tell you a little bit about how we're going to go about redistricting, and then I'll wrap up at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I am a resident of current District Four, which you are a part of, so I'm very pleased to be able to present this to you today. So our third topic is a redistricting 101, and if you could do the next slide, please. Our criteria, which are set by the U.S. Constitution, federal statute, and the California Election Code, are applied in the following order. Each district is to be reasonably equal in total population to the other districts. The districts must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. The districts must be geographically contiguous. Number four, the geographic integrity of city, local neighborhood, and communities of interest should be respected. And number five, we should aim for geographic compactness. Next slide, please. So, the first criteria is reasonably equal population, and as Brian told you, every 10 years, the district lines have to be redrawn to make each district even in size again, and this is based on the 2020 census. The numbers for the 2020 census have not been released yet, but the expectation is that each district will be about 2 million people. Next slide. We will be looking to give racial and ethnic groups a fair shot. Next slide. I'm going to show you a couple of examples of how redistricting can take away minority voting rights. This is an example of the black figures are, there are four black figures in this population, and this is an example of how they're split so that you only have one in each district. Next slide, please. The Voting Rights Act may require drawing a majority-minority district if the minority group is geographically compact, politically cohesive, and large enough to be a majority within a district. And this is an example of how you could redraw that same population to allow the black figures to elect the candidates of their choice. Next slide. The next criteria is that the districts must be contiguous, and you could see on the pictures examples of contiguous and non-contiguous districts. Hopefully, none of our districts will end up looking like that contiguous district. Next slide. And what we're really focusing on right now is preserving the geographic integrity of cities, neighborhoods, and communities of interest, and so we are taking testimony from different areas of Los Angeles County about where they would want to be included in these five districts that we will be creating. Next slide. And in your case, Los Angeles County has two major islands. One of them is Santa Catalina, and the other one is San Clemente, which is uninhabited. The, an island is part of the mainland to which it has ferry routes, and you can see there that you have ferry routes to San Pedro and Long Beach, so you would be part of that community. Next slide. Finally, we want to be as compact as possible with our districts, and that means that we won't bypass nearby populations in order to favor another area of the county. And these are just examples of how districts could be drawn that are actually acceptable. Next slide. Finally, I wanted, we're to avoid partisan favoritism. The supervisor races are nonpartisan, but when you have, this is an example of an area that has 50 precincts, 60% are yellow, and 40% are green. The two pictures on the right are unacceptable ways to draw districts. The middle one shows five yellow districts and zero green districts, so the yellow is always in the majority, and the one on the right shows two yellow and three green districts, where, that there are more green districts than yellow districts, even though there are fewer green voters than yellow voters. So, we will be trying to avoid districts that look like the two districts on the right. Next slide. And I'm going to turn it back over to Brian.
Thank you. Mary, next slide. So, we're hoping that the public will get involved by going to our website and signing up and regularly getting our materials. Once the, once the mapping software is installed, which will be very soon, they'll, you will be able to go onto the county website for free and use the Esri mapping software to draw a map if you, that reflects your point of view and submit it to us. To make this more, this process more widely available, we are holding workshops throughout the county, particularly there are 10 sessions where we're asking people to describe their community of interest in their areas of affiliation. The next slide, please. The workshops started in the middle of July, and they'll continue through August. In fact, we, these colors don't reflect the supervisory districts. We've tried to localize the hearings, and so we are now in the blue zone, Zone H, and there was a hearing focusing on Zone H, there will be a hearing focusing on Zone H on August 19th, and you're welcome to join us there either in person or virtually over Zoom, but you could submit, you could attend any of the hearings and submit your thoughts to us in writing, in, as a drawn map, or in person at one of the hearings. Next slide. Thank you. We also have a toolkit that's available in the 12 major languages spoken in the Los Angeles County area that gives kind of an overview, a fact sheet about the commission, this canned presentation, and access, how to access our website to get more information. Next slide. This is a list of the commissioners, and one more slide, I think. We will be happy if you would like to answer any questions you have now, and if you want to find out more, here's where you can contact us through, online, where you can find out about our meetings, how you can listen to them, and submit comments to us. And with that, that's the end of our presentation, but Mary and I would answer questions if you have any now.
Hello, this is Annie, I'm the mayor of the city of Avalon, and I have three questions, kind of. Who selects the commissioners?
There was a very lengthy process to select the commissioners. The county got members of their various audit staff to solicit applications. We submitted lengthy applications and answered questions about our background and our skills and our understanding of the diversity of the county. Those were reviewed, and the first six commissioners, no, then a pool of commissioners was created who were qualified. We were drawn at random, the first six using the ping pong ball method, and then the six commissioners picked the remaining eight. I did it backwards, didn't I, Mary? The first eight commissioners were drawn at random using the ping pong ball method, and we picked the subsequent six to try to ensure that the 14-member commission was diverse both geographically as well as in terms of racial and ethnic background, age, skills, that sort of thing.
There were over 700 applications for the commission, and there's a detailed explanation of how the commission was picked on the commission website, if you want to look at that at your leisure.
Your explanation was just enough, thank you. So, do you ever have, you know, here we are, just this little place out here, do you ever have it where a council in and of itself can work to develop a strategy for what they think would be redistricting and submitting it as a body, or Lisa shaking her head, yes?
Yes, absolutely. Individuals can submit maps, but more often, we get maps from community organizations, councils, or other kinds of institutions that kind of can pool their thoughts and their point of view and their staffing resources to submit something more complete.
Okay.
I believe some university professors also submitted maps last time around.
Oh, wow, okay. And then my last one is, you showed a film, you showed a slide with, and it had all the cities and the districts, and we're in District Four, is there a way to go back to that?
You, your, your staff has the PowerPoint presentation, so they should be able to.
It's number 10, nine and 10.
Okay, I don't know that we're able. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so, whoops, okay, okay. So, you talk, it's best if it is contiguous, because we got number four way out on, where's that?
Contiguous when there's an island. Well, Mary, you explained this, so why don't you go back to it?
Well, District Four is contiguous, except for the island, but it wraps around the coast. There's two fours there, and it's hard to see the little pink lines, but it starts at Playa del Rey and goes all the way over to Pomona, I think.
Oh, that would be considered contiguous. Interesting, and then the little purple, okay, okay, okay.
I'm not saying it makes sense, but it is contiguous.
Yeah, this map is definitely better than the senatorial district that we're in, in that we're not in Long Beach, we follow the coast and then all the way to West Hollywood, so this map definitely was a better designed district than our senatorial.
Okay, okay, all right.
Unlike the state commission, which is drawing congressional, state senator, and state assembly, and tax equalization board districts, we are, one of our priorities is to keep this, honor the city boundaries. So, I think it's, it's possible that cities could be split, but I think it's unlikely.
Except for Los Angeles, which will split, because it's just too large, but.
Well, thank you, you've answered my question, Council, Mayor Protim.
I just had a quick question about, it appears on the map, and I brought it up on the website just so I could see it better, but it appears as though some cities are split. Is that the case? And if so, how does that work? How do you have two, two sets of representation?
It is the case that some cities are split, and we hope to avoid that, but it may not be possible because the number one criterion is that the districts have to have equal population. So, you try as best, Long Beach is very large, Los Angeles is enormous, it's hard to keep them together with just five districts. Then your, it was second to your question, yeah.
Oh, and then the other part of my question is, it shows that the public hearing for the blue zone, if you will, is Thursday, August 19th. That's kind of where we're falling right now. Is there going to be a public hearing here in Avalon as well?
Public hearings are virtual, except for three that we have scheduled to be in geographic locations, but even those three can be accessed virtually via Zoom. So, even though the August 19th hearing is scheduled to be virtual, which means it's going to be via Zoom, however, anyone can testify at any of the hearings. You're not prohibited from testifying at the other hearings if the August 19th date doesn't work for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
We may have been confusing because I said the opposite. I said that the three in August were going to have a physical presence, we were going to be meeting in a location, and that's our intention, but we are struggling with the changing COVID situation and finding locations. So it's unlikely it will be in Avalon because that would be inconvenient for the majority of people in the blue area. We're looking at a location somewhere else on the west side, but as Mary said, you can attend any of them via Zoom.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I see the only Spanish one that you'll have is that just August 7th? Can that also be on Zoom?
Yes, but if you need simultaneous translation and you request it ahead of time, we'll provide it for any of the hearings.
And you do that on your website?
Yes.
Thank you.
The translation could be in any of the 14 languages that are recognized in Los Angeles County.
And do we have any, asking, this is it, City Manager, do we have anybody asking questions on your machine?
I have no questions of the time.
Thank you.
And then just something to keep in mind, and I'm not sure, Brian and Mary, if you mentioned the date, but I know that towards the end of August, there will be the release of the actual site that you can utilize to create your own map, so any citizen can go on and create their own map, any entity can go on and create their own map. I think it might be beneficial if the council is wanting and willing to just provide a letter of support in support of keeping the entire island as part of one district, and in terms of keeping, as they stated already, but just to reinforce the request to be a part of both the Long Beach and/or San Pedro region so that we have that connectivity to the island and the contiguous mapping. But there's, there will be a full map where you can go and design and drag around lines and see what the numbers look like, and I believe just what they're waiting for is the census numbers to be uploaded into that system. Correct me if I'm wrong on that one, please.
Yes, and you can submit your comment in writing. So, if you want to send a letter to the commission, that will be noted and taken into account. You don't have to attend the oral hearings.
And you don't have to draw a map. You can simply say what you just said in a letter, and then that will note the fact of your desire to be connected in a way that you explained it.
Thank you. And I end up with one more question, and Lisa, I know, thank you, I know you've been following this for all of us. Some of the other council members, but I know Lisa has been most directly involved. So, you're saying every district should have about 2 million people in it? Is that the first thing you're saying?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and then, do they, are they, when we create the map, are we provided other demographic information on their ethnicity and income levels and that kind of thing, no?
Yes, the software is very powerful, and it's got a lot of layers, including down to the precinct level or the census block level. Information about ethnicity, income, city, boundaries, physical features. You can consider quite a bit, almost enough to be overwhelming in terms of what you have available to you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions or comments? Mary and Brian, we'd like to thank you for joining us today and giving the explanation of this issue of redistricting, some of the council, Dianne Michael was probably on the council when they redistricted. But the rest of us are kind of new, so this is kind of new to us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was a pleasure.
We will now have department reports.
Good evening, Green Law Director of Public Works, got three items to report out. We have a new saltwater station at the Green Pier at Middle Beach. Dan got a donation from an ominous donor, and Public Works installed that. So, it looks like everybody's, it's working good, everybody's very happy with it. Big upgrade all the way through. I really appreciate the donation. Then we had a sewer main repair on the Burma Trail last week. We had tree roots that had entered into an old clay pipe that came down there at two locations, so we replaced those two sections, the pipe, and removed the two trees. They had been a problem for a while, so that should alleviate that. And in the future, we'll schedule this pipe to get lining, so that it's not just clay down there anymore. It'll be, have a new lining in it. But otherwise, it's back in service in full function. And then we had a waterline break at the Crescent Avenue median. You see that we have some excavation going there. It's going to last for one more day between Metropole and Whitley out there on that grass median. And so, it just was a line that had seen the end of its useful life and kept on getting multiple breaks. So, even though it was kind of like in the middle of summer, we just said, you know, we're going to be out there again with three more breaks next week. So, we just took in to get it all done at once, okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spock.
Good evening, everybody. Orin Karstafen, Avalon Harbor Master. We had another outstanding weekend of boating, with another week of spectacular weather. We're seeing the ocean temps now in the 70s. Here are the numbers for the arriving boats Friday through Sunday. Patrol moored approximately 400 boats this weekend for a total of 1,213 nights. I wanted to update you on a couple of our patrol boats that we were working to get back in service. That was Boat Three and Boat Seven. Boat Seven, the engine is done, and all the mechanical work is done. They'll be putting that back in the boat, and we should see that probably next week. Boat Three, which just, beautiful job on Boat Three, all done up there at Southwest Marine Resources in San Pedro. That was delivered to Costa Mesa today, where the insurer is going to do the final sign-off on that. They have to do some sea trials and make sure everything is up to what they, what they want. And then they'll deliver that to, or they'll call me, and we'll get it back to the island. So, that's Three and Seven. The mole crane should be back in service by the end of the week. If everything goes great, we've got all the parts. Fletcher Canby is going to be working with our harbor maintenance crew, and they will be, you'll see them out there busy all this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That should bring us up to date on that one item. If anybody saw the video that shows a mariner and a 30-foot parker that slammed into the Alpha Dinghy Dock this weekend, it was, you know, something to see on that video, but I can assure you that no one was hurt. There was very little damage. There was nothing done to our dock, inflatable there did receive some damage. On another note, we did go ahead and do an accident report with the gentleman and get all of the information. It really comes down to operator inexperience. We have a lot of new mariners out on the water, and so, a lot of, there is really no criteria for someone to go in and buy a boat and then bring it out to the island. A lot of times, they're just learning on the cuff. So, that's what happened. The Harbor Patrol, I just want to say, works very well with the boaters of Avalon to make sure that people are aware of the dangers, to keep a vigilant watch when they're around their boat or swimming near their boat. Obviously, we always require people to stay within the swim lines and anywhere near the beach and keep the fairways open, so, and that's really all I have. Any questions?
And the new fuel dock operators, I know Tomas is still there, but are everybody happy?
Over there, yeah, Dion Suns?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, it seems like their operation is running smoothly. I see boats using both docks, the upper and lower dock. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, I just wondered, yes.
Okay, yeah, now everything seems to be good.
Yes, excellent.
Okay.
And, so, remember a while back, you reported, or I think it was you, maybe it was JJ, about the boaters needing a license? Is that now that they're starting with the younger age kids, working up to the old folks?
That's correct. So, as the California Boater Card, every year that goes by, another five-year age group is looped in. And that's really just to get people to have the basic knowledge. You know, it's like, before it became the Boater Card, it used to be a boating safety booklet that anybody could do, and when you did it, and you presented, or you did the questionnaire and read the book and turned in your information, you could get 10% off on your vessel insurance. So, and that's still the case with the Boater Card. And then Towboat U.S. and all those groups are very supportive, and they have websites all that are focused on getting people their Boater Card.
And so, then who's responsible for monitoring that, boating and waterway?
Harbor Patrol, sheriffs, anybody that's on the water can ask somebody for their Boater Card. And then, it's a, it's a, it's a minor infraction if somebody doesn't have one.
All right, thank you. And any questions of our Harbor Master? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Joe Badali, captain of Avalon Sheriff's Station, and going to report that we had a uptick in unlicensed drivers here in the city, and just want to advise everybody who's listening, and if you guys can get the word out that a lot of minors are driving golf carts unlicensed, and it does have a long-term effect on them obtaining a license. So, if we can get the word out on that, that'd be great. Alcohol-related incidents continue to be an ongoing issue with us, and we are managing. There's been no use of force, however, we're dealing with a lot of uncooperative intoxicated individuals, and so that continues to be something that keeps us busy. On Sunday afternoon, we had a suspicious vessel landing, and of that landing, it was along Pebble Beach. There were 12 individuals who fled from that vessel, and we detained those involved, believing that they may have been involved in criminal activity, be it a drug smuggling boat or involved in some type of illegal activity. It was determined that they were not part of a criminal element. It was more of a human smuggling event, and my understanding is that those detained did not face any immigration consequences or deportation following that detention. On a positive note, today, we had 10 members of the Sheriff's Youth Foundation come over, and we met with all the summer school students on campus over at the school. We distributed 82 bags, backpacks filled with school items and supplies. And part of their visit was also to share with the children of the community our future intent of starting a youth activities league here on the city and for the city. And basically, it's investing in the future generations that we have here as our young people continue to grow and experience things in life. We're going to be offering different types of sports, life skills, martial arts, and scuba to some of the older high school seniors and those that are older as well. So, that's going to be privately funded through the foundation and won't require any city resources, but we'll ask for volunteers to step up and be coaches and mentors as we begin to bring these programs online. And that's all I have.
The timing of you talking about the youth activities league, and I know Dan is aware of the young man's name, but I don't know his name. I ran into him today as well, the guy who wanted to do the boxing, but just started with sparring, and I guess he was, he made it in the newspaper, because they were messing around.
They were practicing.
Yeah, they were practicing. So, I don't know. I know he's very interested in getting involved, and you, now you have his name, so if there's any way you can tie him in, that would be wonderful.
And boxing is a sport that we do offer through the activities league.
Yeah, great, that would be great. He's been wanting to do that for quite some time.
Great.
Any other questions of our captain?
I did actually speak to him earlier, so thank you so much for that, again, Captain Badali. But I did request from him, and if we could also, if the council, look into what protocols we have regarding the incident on Sunday, and work council, local advocates, with the county immigration office affairs, so we can look into those protocols and see if we can, you know, improve anywhere, if there are any loopholes that we could look at. So, next time, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen, but we do have something in place where as a community, we do this together, and we don't all just go up in shambles, because that's kind of how it felt on Sunday.
I didn't hear a lot of what was.
You're wanting to make sure that there are, you know, this was, I think, though, this was an incident that was dealt with by the feds, correct?
That's correct.
And so, and you all just go to, I mean, you get involved to help and that kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, once we were determined that they weren't involved in a criminal violation of law, be it local, state, or federal law, unrelated to immigration, we had no reason to detain them, and that's pursuant to Senate Bill 54. And I think what you were sharing and alluding to is the need for us having resources for future type of events, so that they can have representation, they can have advocates, I think, speak on their behalf or provide some type of intervention if they do come here undocumented. Is that what you're relating and sharing?
Yes, thank you, Captain. Is that something we can bring back to look at?
Or is it a matter of just letting us know what your policies are?
Well, we have our policies, but that would involve both state, county resources, I think, that would provide that advocacy and support of folks that are deemed undocumented, so that we can, you know, get them the help they need and intervention that is best for them coming here from a foreign country.
Is there a model perhaps set up in one of the other cities under the sheriff's contract that might have those kind of, like, if they would have arrived in San Pedro or Wilmington or Long Beach, they must have those kind of protocols as well, and those resources?
We try to stay out of the immigration realm as the sheriff's department, and that's more, I think, of a state and federal and county-level type of intervention and help.
But I guess the question would be, when that happens, who would we reach out to? What would our, who would be our contacts and that kind of thing? Is that what you're thinking, Yessenya?
Yeah, exactly. And then I know that the county is going to be working on something, so I would definitely like for us to stay in touch with them.
Yeah, and we'll continue to liaison and communicate and be part of that working group, so we can, you know, best serve those folks that may come here, so, for sure.
Any other questions?
I have no comment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a couple things. Tended via Zoom the LA area fire chiefs' meetings this morning with all the other local fire chiefs. There's some great training that they're put together, some online, some on the mainland. That'll be really good for our guys. We've been busy. We've had a lot of back-to-back calls, splitting up the crews, and a lot of calls on the trails. It's hot, so the hikers are calling a lot, getting the resources out of town. We had another close call at Hamilton Cove, stove top again. Like, alarm went off, alerted the occupants. And then, just want to remind everyone that the fire lanes, we're really trying to crack down on the fire lanes, and the fire department will be soon issuing tickets for people parking in the fire lanes after hours when code is off work.
Any questions of our chief? No, thank you. And boy, we know you've been busy. Okay, I, I think we got a fine master.
Evening, council. Real quick, I just wanted to let everyone know that we've published our visitor-driven revenue reports. They can be found on the city finance page, so cityofavalon.com/finance. Through May is the information we have, and as a lot of people in town know, we had a really strong May from a finance perspective of the city as well. Visitor-driven revenues in May exceeded every May I could find on record, and they were actually more in line with a typical June. Early reports from June and July even show maybe not as strong as May, but certainly stronger than prior years. So, hoping this trend can continue, that'll allow the city with the budget that was adopted to really build back those reserves quicker. You know, so it's positive on that front. Just want to urge caution as COVID is still here, and, you know, obviously, with the news of the last week, things can change, but knock on wood, things are looking strong from a visitor-driven revenue side. And with that, if there are any other questions?
Any questions? No, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just three updates from the community services department. First, our Avalon summer date camp is going really well. We've got a capacity of 30 kids with three leaders, and we're at capacity just about every day. So, we're requesting that you register in advance. You know, generally, the week out is probably enough, so be registering now for next week to get a spot. Easiest way to do that is to go to our website. It's recreation.cityofavalon.com, or you can come in and manually register here at City Hall during normal business hours. Graduation banners came down today. First, I wanted to thank Edison for letting us put them up again. We've worked with the school and their parent committee to get those up. They'd been up for about a month. We kind of extended her stay a little bit longer, but they're down, and they can be retrieved here by the individual graduates at City Hall during our normal business hours, 8 to noon, and then 1 to 5, Monday through Thursday. So, you can pick those up here. And then lastly, I want to give a here. And then last, I want to give a quick update to the fireworks or the lack of the fireworks show that we had. I think I reported out at our last meeting that there's been verbal guarantees that the Johnsons are going to get reimbursed for that. I spoke to Gary this afternoon, late this afternoon. He still has not been reimbursed, and he's looking forward to that. At this time, we are recommending, we don't know how long that's going to take, that we're recommending that we do not continue to pursue a Labor Day fireworks show, really focus on getting the Johnsons reimbursed for their show, and then take the time to work with the chamber to start soliciting proposals for next year, the 2022 show. I've made contacts out to the three other providers in California for fireworks, and we'll be getting out in the next few weeks a request for proposals and start that process. So at this time, it just, the turnaround, I mean, we would have to be in the next week or so lining up another operator. And we just don't see that necessarily happening. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
I would just have a question or a comment, not knowing exactly how our budget will be next year as well. Might we want to reach out, I'm kind of looking for consensus, but reach out for a military band perhaps? That might be, oh, that might be something that's not quite as expensive, and they might have their own transportation. I don't know if that's something that you would want us to research a little bit, council? Or do you want us to try to come up with a $50,000 or $60,000 for USC and call it a day?
I mean, that is probably a little steep for, it's probably 20 to 25 for USC. Granted, it's expensive. We did reach out to them, tried to secure that. And we're concerned about hotels again going into next year. So they are, you know, they're willing and able to come out next year. We certainly can look at, you know, another band as well.
Okay. Fourth of July is about Independence Day, and I somehow think a military band is appropriate, or a drum corps, or a bugle corps, or some form, I think would be nice to.
So I can, you know, with staff, we can work on some options, you know, in the next couple of months, come back to you with some different options and kind of costs that are associated with that. Hopefully, we'll get the Johnsons squared away at that point. Certainly, when and if and when they get reimbursed, you know, they're committing to next year's show. But we need to get them reimbursed first.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
No, thank you.
A couple of questions on that?
I had one, sorry. Can I step in?
Go ahead, Michael.
I just had a couple of quick updates. The first update that I had on the planning side is the survey for the Avalon sea level rise and adaptation, climate change adaptation plan is still open. What we're trying to do is solicit information regarding some of the tools, the strategies to address sea level rise and climate change. There's some surveys here at City Hall. That survey closes on July 30. So if you have not yet taken it, please do, because your input's really important. What we'll be doing is using that feedback to revise strategies and then eventually incorporate that into a comprehensive update to our local coastal plan. And that's a significant plan that really directs strategies to address climate change for the next 50 years or more. So please take that survey if you have not had to, or I mean, if you've not taken it yet. And then I just wanted to give council a quick update. Tomorrow night at the Planning Commission meeting, they will be discussing the potentiality for some penalties for illegal transient rentals. Currently, we do not have a set fine schedule for illegal transient rentals. So the Planning Commission and the City Council have both expressed some interest in that. Planning Commission will be discussing that and then making a recommendation. If approved, that resolution and ordinance will come back to the City Council for consideration of adoption. They'll also be discussing whether they want to look at minimum number of nights and increasing the threshold. Previously, under the CUP, it had been one. That requirement had been eliminated when we transitioned from the CUP to the transient rental license. So they'll be talking about implementing a potential minimum number of nights, and then that will also be incorporated in the same ordinance and then brought forth to council at a later date. So for anyone who has interest in that, I'd advise them to, please tune in tomorrow.
Well, and along those same lines, the revocation of a, a revocation of a permit, I understand, for things like doing things illegally. However, when it comes to the noise and those violations, there's really nothing solid that says, three times, we have a noise complaint, you know, and people file written complaints, and nothing really seems to happen. I don't know if you're going to be looking at that as well.
We do take all complaints seriously. When the city is notified, we do contact those property managers and put them on notice. I don't believe we've received any in the last couple of weeks, but I can go back and look into that and give you a better answer on how many of those complaints we have.
It just seems that there's, you know, everybody says, oh, there's like a three-strike rule. There's no three-strike rule, you know.
No, but if there's repeated offenders, what we will do is take that out and put them for recommendation for revocation. The city has a comprehensive plan to address that. They notify through letter the property owner of the violation. We try and work with them. If there's repeated, they do put their CUP or their transient rental in jeopardy. If it is revoked by the Planning Commission, then they're not allowed to reapply for another 12 months. So there are some significant issues with that.
Okay.
Question on that. If they have their CUP, their current CUP revoked, would they then have to get the new CUP, the transient license?
If they get their CUP revoked, they would have to wait 12 months, and then they can apply. When they apply, they would have to apply for the transient rental license. They would not be allowed to apply for the conditional use permit.
Just to warn people out there, you could lose your CUP in the way you use it now if you don't follow the rules.
And what do we have in the books for people that are renting illegally? Nothing, right?
We do have the ability to assess and go back for non-payment of TOT. It is quite a process in order to do that. This will give us a lot more tools in order to assess fines more appropriately and also go after them for TOT owed. But the, I think, right now, what we would hit them with was approximately a $100 fine. And so that's something that has been an interest in both the Planning Commission and obviously council.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question as well. One of the things that's always been very difficult for, as a planning commissioner and as a council member, to try to determine is that complaints come in, but they don't always come to the city. So there's loud noises, there's big party, they call the sheriff's department. They don't necessarily call the city and report it to 0220. So the city is not always aware of how many calls a particular residence is going to get. So I'd love to see a conversation on how we could work together with the sheriff's department in, you know, maybe a weekly list of some sort that says what addresses the department was called to, so that that can somehow be incorporated in the, in this process.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get with Captain Badali to discuss that. The other thing, too, is not necessarily the need for a list, but they, all of the transient rentals should also have a sign posted predominantly on the front of their building. And as they go up to respond, they should be able to see that sign. If they don't, that's also a violation of the condition of approval, and that would also put their CUP or their transient rental license in jeopardy. But I'll get with Captain Badali, and we'll work out a system for that.
Great. Thank you. Good. Good. Cindy. Okay. City attorney. Nothing? Okay. I got it. Thank you. Councilmember report. Okay, I'll start. My son and his fiance are coming in tomorrow, and so I will not be available for minutes with the mayor. But you all know you can contact me at 310-339-2935. The Chamber of Commerce, of course, has a lot of stuff updated, as well as our city website and the hospital. So I'm going to miss you this month, and I'll see you next month. Also, if some of you are aware, there was an executive order put out by Governor Newsom, asking for voluntary compliance to reduce our water utilization by 15%. And there is no violation for that, but he's just asking for cooperation. And as we know, as we go forward, if we continue with no rain, we could be looking at the phase, the old phase one that we knew of the 10% reduction by August 20, but 2022. So it never hurts to kind of get back into those good habits we had when we were conserving earlier. And that's all I have.
I can go. I just have a couple of quick ones. I also had the privilege of joining the sheriff's department and the Sheriff's Youth Foundation today to distribute the backpacks at the Avalon School. Also, board member Bruce McRae and McGruff, the crime dog, were there. And I know the younger students at the school really enjoyed the crime dog being there. So that was very nice. And I wanted to say that I appreciate the work of Captain Badali and the sheriff's department in really moving forward on bringing some of these services to the island. That was one of the promises that Captain Badali made during the interview process, and I just wanted to shout out that I appreciate this is happening. A blanket comment, as the now president of the Gateway Cities Council's of government, my role will encompass many meetings on behalf of the organization, and not all of them will have reportable action. However, when there is something that pertains to Avalon, I will bring it back to the meetings here. But I will not be reporting out on each individual meeting I attend, as there are too many per week. My presidency term expires on June 30 of 2022. And lastly, I was just wondering if any of the other council members, is anybody already planning to attend the Contract Cities Conference in September?
I am not.
I am not. I'm working on that, Cindy.
Okay. I'm not at this time. Or Michael?
Not at this time.
Okay, great.
If anyone is going, we are hosting the president's reception on Thursday night, so you will all be invited if you do attend. It's actually the president and the past president are both BDK mayors from our cities, and so we'll be having a big party.
Cindy, are you attending?
I wasn't, I flip-flopped on it. So I wanted to see if anybody else had already signed up.
And Yessenya, you said you're working on it?
Yes. Kids.
At the next council meeting, we'll be having a resolution for whoever is attending to be the voting delegate. So I'll be in contact with you, too.
Great.
Okay, great. Thank you, and that's all I have.
It's too hot to go to the desert in September.
It's Sacramento. There's one in Sacramento.
No, we're talking Contract Cities.
Oh, engine. Wow.
Yeah. Sarah, my wife can babysit for a couple hours, but she is gonna, you know, she does have a limit.
Might hold her to it.
There we go.
And then there's the lead, too. Is that September?
October.
October. Oh, okay. That's right. Okay. And Lisa, did you have anything to report?
Yeah, just attended a meeting along with Michael and Denise and Senator Feinstein's office, Congressman Lowenthal's office, Senator Ben Allen's office, Representative O'Donnell's office, and a number of others locally, to, excuse me, Representative Han's office as well, regarding the DDT and next steps. Nothing to report currently, other than they are working towards determining responsibility for the cleanup and had offered, had many offers from both Representative Han's office and Representative Ted Lu's office regarding assistance with EPA communication. So looking forward to getting some stuff going there.
Great. Great. Michael, Yessenya?
I have nothing.
Yessenya?
Just following up from Sunday, I, me and Lisa have worked before with Long Beach Immigrations Rights Coalition, and we are hoping that they will be able to do maybe a Zoom on immigration rights for the community. So once we're able to organize that, I'll get the word out. But that'll be it for me.
Great. Okay. All righty. If that's it, we will go to oral communication. This is an opportunity from people in the community to talk on an item that's not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Hello, council, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Affolder, and I run the Island Eat Street Cart. I'm not on the agenda today, but I'd like to make a request. I'm having a problem with the hours of operation for my cart. The city manager and I disagree on what the ordinance says. If the city manager is correct and I cannot operate after 10:00 PM, I'll be forced to close my company and fire my employees. I've always done things by the book, and because of that, I'm only one of the 20 different people who have seen this through. I need your help in saving this company the service it provides and the jobs it has created. With that in mind, I'm requesting an emergency item be added to the council agenda to clarify the street cart vending hours. The urgency is that if we cannot resolve this until the August meeting, it'll cause significant financial injury to my company. I appreciate the council's time, and I'll respect your decision if you cannot hear this request today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I was going to talk about this at Mayor Report, but because that was done before Mr. Affolder came up and spoke. I would, I believe that the service that is being provided by Mr. Affolder is a definite benefit to the community. We have a lot of late-night revelers who stay up till 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. The only place they can go to eat right now is at Pete's Snack Bar. That's the only one I am aware of. I know that when we would establish this program, we really had no idea where it's going. And it really has been slow getting started. So I'm no fault of Mr. Affolders or anybody's or for any of our vendors. The whole process even took us a lot of time when we were told that we had to do something like this. But now that his business specifically has been providing this service, after 10 o'clock, I would like us to seriously take a look at this at a special meeting very soon to see if we could not, one or two things, because we can change it. First of all, it would be extending his hours till 2 o'clock. And if we needed to look at a different location, I might suggest that we look at the left side of the stage. As you know, the two busiest, well, Marlin Club is pretty busy, but J L's will be opening, and so, and you also have the Chief's G Club. That's a lot, that's a lot of people coming out and needing something to eat. So, and some water and whatever. So I would like to see us accommodate that. I understand. And I don't know if the captain would like to speak to that at some point or at the special meeting. I know that they have, when they are available, they have a presence there, which I think is wonderful. But when people get out of a bar, whether they're going for a hot dog or walking back to their hotel, they can be noisy. And there can be fights leaving a bar, not just because of the hot dog stand down the street. So I would really like us to get together as soon as possible to talk about this and see what we can do to resolve it, to make his business stay open. Is there a consensus to have a special meeting? We've got five heads shaking. And then, so, city manager, do you, do you just, I mean, if we could cram something in by the end of the week, I know we all have a busy schedule, but if we could cram something in by Friday, that would be good. Do you want it as a day meeting or a night meeting?
Daytime.
Day better. Can you, like a lunchtime, if we could do something at like 12 or your lunch break, and you could bring a sandwich?
Right now, Wednesday or Thursday this week is great.
Okay.
Can't be Wednesday, has to be Thursday.
Oh, of course, you've got to announce it, right?
Need 24 hours' notice.
Okay. And then my next question would be, let's say we're in consensus about either changing location, changing hours or whatever. What, to work on it, the most expeditious would be the?
Scott, can it be in the form of an urgency ordinance so it becomes effective immediately?
So you have several options here. One is an urgency ordinance that you need to pass by force vote, which goes into effect immediately. That's one option. Option number two is to review the ordinance, which the council adopt.
number two is to review the ordinance, which the council adopted, and there's language there about hours. And you could make a determination as the council, since you adopt this ordinance, that what you meant when you adopt this is, is that you could work after 10 o'clock, and then you could put a limitation on that without actually amending the ordinance. If you wanted to go that way, what I would urge you to do is to make that interpretation of the ordinance and then amend the ordinance to clarify, if you find that there's language that needs to be clarified, to actually put it in the ordinance itself. So it's just not your interpretation of it. That way, under that scenario, it's not an emergency ordinance, it's a, you can still do that. You can, you can say, this is what we meant by this, or you can do, this is what we meant by this, so from this point forward, this is how the interpretation is, but go ahead and amend the ordinance to set the hours, you know, to set definitive hours. So that would probably be the last way, would probably be the cleanest way to do it, which it gives, if you're so inclined to give relief right away, and then you definitely put what the hours are in the ordinance right now. It's, there's language in there that the city manager, I believe, puts that limitation at 10, but again, you could interpret it otherwise, and then give us, we could come back with an ordinance on definitive answers. We just need direction on kind of whether, which way you want to go, and then we'll come back with something Wednesday, Thursday.
That could happen on Thursday?
Yes, it could.
And, okay, and the other, the other deal would be the location. Because we have only, we only allow it right now on Catalina and Sumner. Could we say, and food activity from 10 to 12 could be done at the left side of the stage? I don't want, I don't, I don't want, if we can reduce complaints as much as possible from hoteliers and those kinds of people, I would like to do that. If by doing that and keeping him right there at that location, if that's going to be a headache for the sheriffs and for the city, I'm not in favor of, I would say, move it at 10 o'clock so that there's not the noise, and then cut down on headaches, as far as I'm concerned. Do you, would you have a problem if at 10 to 12, the food vendors could be to the left of the stage, and not, but not be there on nights when there's music on the stage, or, you know, when there's, you know, when Ray McEwen comes with his bands or things like that?
I think that, I just want to caution us to, this is not an agenda item, and we're kind of throwing out things that we shouldn't be talking about until Thursday. So I would say, Annie, you should, along with myself, I have a lot to say on this as well, we should maybe get with the city manager tomorrow and share the comments to her so that she can present them to the whole council. And I'm in favor of that meeting, I'm in favor of it on Thursday. And lastly, I just want to say, this was the first time I've ever heard a complaint. So I realize that it may have been excessive this weekend, but it's the first complaint I've ever received on the cart, ever. So I want to take that into consideration as well. One complaint shouldn't require us to, you know, re-energize all city resources in this way. So anyway, that's my two cents. I'd like to punt the rest of the conversation to Thursday.
Yeah, I was going to just hop in, and we'll come to you with options on Thursday, and then we can go through that ordinance, and I'll do it as a direction, as an urgency ordinance, and as a regular ordinance. So you'll have the full options available. It won't be a long ordinance, so we can get it done by Thursday, but yeah.
But I thought you said that wasn't going to be an ordinance, that was just going to be a little tweaking of the code?
Well, it has to be an ordinance, because it's an amendment of the municipal code, but it can be a very, very short ordinance.
And it can all be done on one day, if we all agree.
And I think there's other sections of the...
If we have four-fifths votes, it can be done on one day, but you could also make the interpretation and adopt it through the regular thing, and say that this is our interpretation, this is what we meant, but we're going to go through the normal process of adopting an ordinance, just to set it through, but it's in effect the minute you make that interpretation on Thursday. So we'll give you all the options.
Scott, my office will handle it first, and we'll run it by you.
Okay.
Yeah, keeping our costs down, right, Denise? Okay. All righty.
Always.
Okay. All right, we have a, any other oral communication?
I have no communications.
Okay, consent calendar.
We have only two items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes, and we have two from, two special city council meetings of June 21st and June 24th of 2021, and then a regular city council meeting on July 6th of 2021. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $753,685.62.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 1 and 2.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think Michael beat you. And call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye, aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And item three?
Yes, item three is the first reading of an ordinance establishing procedures for expediting permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. This is an ordinance that you are required to adopt pursuant to state law, so you have to adopt this ordinance. What this ordinance does is it provides for expedited processing of electrical charging station permits, so that you don't have to go, so it doesn't take months and years to get a permit. What the ordinance requires is that you develop a checklist with your city engineer that provides things that someone needs to do to get an over-the-counter permit for one of these charging stations, and if they satisfy the requirements of the checklist, which the state has given us an outline, then they go ahead and get their permit. This does allow for you to tweak the, one, it does allow you to maintain your standards in terms of where you want the chargings to go, whether you want it in a home, next to a garage, a business, whether you want to allow, if there's technology developed, have the cords out on the street through your infrastructure. The one thing that the ordinance does, and the regulations do provide, is that you have to guard against tripping hazards, and you have to have a plan to mitigate against tripping caused by the, these cords, if they are put out to where the public can walk on them. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. This does apply to residential and commercial. Most states have done this, and they've adopted the checklist, which we have ready to go. Obviously, Avalon is a little different because of the situation in the flats, and so, but we are able to adjust it for Avalon conditions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, for example, when I say, because it says anchored to be the floor-mounted or wall-mounted electrical vehicle charging stations, if we come up with a way that they can actually drill through the sidewalk and put it onto this, we could, that's not going to, that's not going to exclude something creative in the future, because the way it's written here?
As long as there are codes that it can comply with, and that's the big thing. If there are, if there are electrical codes, building codes, that bringing those conduits out, if they can comply with that, you can do that. Your current ordinance does not allow that, so you'd also have to amend that ordinance.
Okay.
You have a municipal code provision that doesn't allow these charging stations
Yeah, like that.
Like on the sidewalk, but that's easy enough to amend, if that's your direction.
Well, it is so funny when you read this. There doesn't seem anything expeditious about this.
I know. Well, it's the development of the checklist that is going to be a while.
Yeah, look at that checklist.
And this is a checklist that was developed by the companies that want to put in these stations quickly. So they have agreed that this is the quick way to do it. It is interesting, though, it's five pages long.
I know.
I do agree with you on that.
Yeah, okay. So would anybody like to do the introduction?
Are there any other questions?
Are there any other questions?
The only question I had for Scott, which she answered, was just the idea of Avalon-specific and specifically flat-specific requirements for this, because of having to either run electrical lines across sidewalks and/or to allow for people who own electric vehicles to be able to charge them in front of their house or not, and the kind of can of worms that opens. In, we don't have assigned parking spots, we don't have reserved parking, so that does concern me. But knowing that we can address those individually as we go through, then I would vote to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Avalon, adding Chapter 4 to Title 4 of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric charging stations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or anything, Michael, on your screen?
I have no comments.
Okay, Denise, the vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
The next item in general business is a first reading of an ordinance of the municipal code for Title 5, Chapter 5, and two different articles, Articles 11 and 14, having to do with banning a commercial operation of personal-assistive mobility devices and electrically motorized boards and motorized scooters in Avalon. So back in April of, April 20th of 2021, the city council discussed the need to ban commercial use of segways and other motorized scooters, citing public safety and congestion concerns. By consensus, the city council directed city staff to draft an ordinance banning the commercial rental and tours of segways, electric scooters, and other similar personal transportation modes. So there was two different article sections in your ordinance that you have in front of you. It would be Title 5, Chapter 5, and Article 11.02 repealed and replaced, and it was just adding the definition of a personal mobility device. Then in Article 11.18, it was adding the prohibition of it. Number, the third change would be in Article 14.01, and once again, it is repealing and replacing and renumbering that section and adding the personal mobility device. And then the last change would be to Article 14.15, and that's adding the prohibition. And we're asking you to introduce and waive.
Is there any discussion, first of all? I personally don't have a problem with segways, but, because I don't think we had any incidents on segways, but, but I do believe our streets are getting packed full of all kinds of electric vehicles, and so, that's all.
Then I will go ahead and make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending Title 5, Chapter 5, Article 11, and Title 5, Chapter 5, Article 14 of the Avalon Municipal Code, banning commercial operation of personal-assistive mobility devices, electrically motorized boards, motorized scooters, and segways in Avalon.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, further comment?
I'll second.
Yessenya?
Any comments, Michael?
No comments.
All right, we can call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, item number five, Mr. Greenlaw?
Good evening again. Okay, this item considers the procurement of the new pump-out float in the Avalon Harbor. So a quick background. We awarded a grant in 2019 for $196,200, which requires a $67,300 match for a total project of $263,500. Council authorized the solicitation in 2020, but the solicitation was delayed due to COVID-19, due to financial concerns with capital projects and then lack of staff. The solicitation went out in June of this year, and the agenda report written with the solicitation results was due after the agenda deadline, so that's why I was going to report out with updated info. And that what was, what the result was, is that we received no bids. So what we're expecting to be reporting out was the bid results, but no bidders. So this morning, one bidder did send an email with a proposed offer to construct the float after the deadline. So then that led to this supplemental information coming out late. I'm sorry that it was late as it is, but we're trying to get together with what happened this morning, and then consult with city attorney and city manager. This was the result of us getting it to you, so that we can keep on moving forward. So no response received from the request for bid solicitation by the deadline, and that was disappointing, because we had utilized public purchase, which is the city's normal nationwide solicitation for public procurement. Additionally, the harbor master reached out regionally to known vendors that do this type of work that he knows, to try to gain interest in the project. The local vendor, Catalina Boatyard, stated they would not be available until December of 2021. Since the project is grant funding, that with, has time-sensitive nature to it, this was not really a feasible option for us to pursue. So it was anticipated the city would not receive a proposal from them. The other regional vendor that does this type of specialized fabrication is Diversified Composites in Long Beach. It appeared they were a very interesting project, but did not submit a response to the RFP by the deadline. Although this morning, they did show interest with an email, which outlined some of the parameters, what they could offer. Essentially, they were offering to build the float only, not the equipment, to the city specification for $135,000, and that's FOB Long Beach, we would transport it over from, once it gets finished. And city staff would be able to add the equipment once it's delivered to the island, just the same thing we did with the fuel float or any other float that we've, or even the float that's out there right now. We built that whole float with our city staff. But at this point, right now, we need a contractor to build that float, because that's what takes us the time for going to get this delivered in the timeframe. Additionally, the contractor over there would accommodate city staff going over to their yard for a couple days, when the floats open on the interior, before they enclose the top of the structure. They would allow them to put the conduits and anything we needed to put inside, so that that would make it easier for us once it gets back to the island. This price appears to fit into the reallocated project budget, which I'll present to you, and is in the range of values that were anticipated, considering that all the prices for building materials have recently been skyrocketed, especially when you start talking high-grade plywood, you know, it can go, you know, three times the normal cost of it, and that could raise it to be thousands of dollars. So the original budget for this float component was estimated to be $120,000, and what he's bid is $135,000. Excuse me. I discussed the options with the procurement with the city attorney this morning, so we can move forward without another solicitation. He stated we have met the city's obligation to solicit a competitive procurement, and we could keep moving forward based on the following. Public Contract Code 2166 provides, if no bids are received, the city council can dispense with public bidding. The city council should be, should also declare the city would not gain a competitive advantage by further bidding, and can contract the work more economically and efficiently by negotiated contract. So then that's based on Avalon Municipal Code Sections 3-4.111(c) and 3-4.206(e). So I have provided a financial analysis. Matt, could I bring up the spreadsheets? The two spreadsheets should be attached to your, to the back of the packet here. Matt? Okay. The first spreadsheet was our proposed budget, and I have highlighted there, prior to float procurement. And you can see the budget item, waste pump-out, and freshwater float. One of those, the number, is $120,000. That's the one that would go up to $135,000. And then you can see... Um, and then you can see down at the very bottom, engineering design and construction management inspections. So let's go to the next tab. Okay? Now you see the highlighted lines. This is after, if we did go forward with this, after the float procurement, you can see that we've added fifteen thousand dollars in the match column, and now we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And where we have, uh, taken that, reallocated was the engineering design, it was at fifty-five thousand. We have finished that engineering design, and so we had a cost savings, yeah, of sixty...
Seven thousand.
Yeah. And then, um, then we have also twelve thousand three hundred originally for construction management inspections. I'll be performing those duties, I'm already getting paid, so we moved that, shift those funds, twelve, some of those funds up there, that's how we come up to fifteen thousand, and we still have some left in, uh, to reallocate, that forty-two hundred and twenty. So you can see financially that it works, okay? And he's also saying that he can complete it in the ninety-day timeframe that we're saying, okay, as long as he can get the plywood materials. So, seems like everything works for us. So, that has changed our revised recommendation, recommended action here, so first, we need to make a finding that pursuant to Public Contract Code two oh one six six, that no bids are received by the specified deadline, and the City Council can dispense with any further public bidding for the procurement. Two, make a finding that the city would not gain a competitive advantage by further bidding and can contract with, for the work more economically and efficiently by negotiations pursuant to the Avalon Municipal Code Sections that I previously read. Direct, uh, three, direct the city manager to negotiate a contract for the procurement not to exceed a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's the new recommended actions in front of you. I am done with the presentation, and I have any questions, I can answer for you.
So, does that mean that guys are gonna, that they're, are we gonna need to house them?
There, everything's gonna happen over in their facility in Long Beach.
Oh, and then until it's in, okay.
And then, and then we'll tow it over here, just like we tow floats over there and back, okay? This is the same vendor that works on our in-float.
Oh, cool, okay.
So we, so it's a known entity for us, also.
Hey, Bob, I have a couple questions.
Yes.
Uh, okay, so, I see the, where the grant amount is, and then I see where the match is, okay, so obviously the projected total, but we haven't actually received a bid from this vendor, correct?
Just, right now, we've received an email, but, but, we're gonna, we're asking to take an action of dispensing with further bidding, and we still have our specification packet that we would, um, form a contract with all of the specifications that are required by the state, um, funding agency, and then we negotiate, negotiate that amount, which at this point, he's offered a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We would have all those stipulations within that, um, within that form of that contract. Once we get that, we're gonna put it in front of the state, state also, and say, here's what, what we've, here's the actions, the common actions we've done, and here is based on this, and this is the form of the contract, we're putting it in front of you to get the okay to move forward, so we would not move forward without getting the blessing of the state funding agency.
Okay, so, I'm very concerned about the financials of this and the not-to-exceed amounts, because, um, obviously, the cost of lumber, even if you can get it, has skyrocketed. And, so, I don't want to be in a position where we potentially say yes to this tonight, and then all of a sudden, the vendor comes back and, you know, it's forty-five percent more because of the cost of materials.
Okay, so, we're gonna enter into a signed contract with him, we're gonna execute a contract. Uh, that's what he offered as of this morning, he could get it done for, and he based that on what, what his pricing structure was, I believe, at the end of June or the start of July, so that was a known pricing structure, which I think the materials were about at their highest point at that point in time.
So if we're at the point, uh, for the rest of the council, if somebody does make a motion, um, then I would just ask that we please do a not-to-exceed of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And I'll leave it for any other questions.
It's in the motion.
Yeah, that's in the third point there.
Okay, so, how do we make a finding?
Well, I'm gonna make the motion. Make a finding that pursuant to Public Contract Code twenty-one sixty-six, that no bids were received by the specified deadline of the City Council, and the City Council can dispense with any further public bidding for the procurement, make a finding that the city would not gain a competitive advantage by further bidding, and contract for the work more economically or efficiently by negotiations pursuant to Avalon Municipal Code Sections Three dash four dot one 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 dot C and Three dash four dot two zero six E, and direct the manager, city manager, to negotiate a contract for the procurement not to exceed a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yep, I'll second that. Any comments, Michael?
I have no comments.
Okay, councils? We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll be going into closed session, public employee appointment, city manager. And now we'll be going into closed session, public employee agreement, city manager.